I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Board Member Miki Chihashki to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Ms. Goodwin?
Thank you, President Tillman. Good evening and thank you for joining us. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin, and I am the proud Director of Communications and Community Relations. Today, we're holding this special honor to welcome our new and our returning student board members. I'd like to begin our program by acknowledging our partners in elected office, some of who are here in person and others who could not join us today, and we thank them for sending a representative. Please put your hands together for Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, a trustee serving on the San Bernardino County Board of Education and a former member of the SBCUSD Board of Education. Representing San Bernardino Superintendent of Schools Ted Alejandre is his community relations manager, Norm Nunez. Representing the office of San Bernardino Mayor Helen Tran, a strong supporter of our district and our students, who sends her congratulations along with her certificate, is Kenesha Boyd. State Senator Ochoa Bog sends her well wishes to our student board members with a special resolution for each of you. Our 45th District Assembly Member James Ramos and esteemed Assembly Member Eloise Gomez Reyes could not be here, but they send their well wishes and provided special certificates of recognition. We also have in the House Edwin Delgado, who is here on behalf of Fifth District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. He has brought with him special certificates as well. And also, someone else who could not join us is the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors Chair Dawn Rao. She's also honoring our student leaders with certificates of recognition. Our students will certainly appreciate them. Let's give our supportive local elected officials another round of applause and thank you. You're also going to proceed with a special recognition for another honoree before we start your oath of office and your swearing in. Before I introduce tonight's special honoree, I'd like to invite our board members and superintendent to make their way to the front of our dais at this time. Executive Cabinet, I would invite you to join us at the ramp here. Chief of District Police Joseph Paulino, I'll also ask you to join us for this special recognition.
It is my great privilege to stand before you tonight to recognize and honor an extraordinary individual whose actions have profoundly impacted our community. When I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. The recipient of the Award for Bravery and Courage is District Police Officer Brett Hoddle, who joined the department in October of 2023 and has already made a name for himself. Officer Hoddle, your bravery and courage in the line of duty not only saved a life, but has also exemplified the highest standards of service and dedication. Let's give him a round of applause. On one critical day when a gunshot victim needed immediate help just down the street from the district police headquarters, you did not hesitate. With remarkable composure and swift action, you used your training in the stop-the-bleed techniques to save a life. Your quick thinking and skilled response in such a dire situation reflects the true essence of heroism. The San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education is honored to present you with the ABC Award, an accolade that signifies more than just bravery and courage. It represents our deepest gratitude and respect for the selflessness and commitment that you demonstrate every day as a police officer. Thank you very much. Now it is time for the annual swearing in of our student board members, who will serve one school year in an advisory role to the Board of Education. Just before the start of this meeting, we held a special reception in their honor. Welcoming these nine students to the governing board is so vital to incorporating the voices of more than 46,000 students here across San Bernardino and Highland. Before we begin the official swearing in, I'd like to acknowledge the families, the parents, and all the adult figures who stand behind each of these high school students. It is a testament to you that they care so much about their schools and their fellow classmates enough to spend part of their Tuesdays with us twice a month. Please put your hands together for them.
I'd like to bring Board Member Chihashki, as she invites the student board members to the front.
First, I'd like to say congratulations to all our board members and thank you to all of their parents and families for supporting them on this in Denver. We know that it's not easy taking on adjunctive duties and trying to get your kids everywhere that they need to be. So, we appreciate you parents and guardians for being here today for your kids and for making sure that our students, our student board members, are here. Our student board member program, this is our second year of our newly minted post-pandemic student board member program. We have nine student board members. They will be representing each of our high schools. And our student board members are a really vital part of each board meeting. They are able to give what we call a preferential vote. So, on each of the action items, with the exception of closed session action items and personnel items, they're able to both speak on items and also give their approval or disapproval for each of the actions that our district is undertaking. They also give reports at each meeting. They're able to talk about items at their school, items of concern, things that they're hearing from their fellow colleagues, maybe something that came up at our student leadership advisory, anything that they believe the school board needs to know, or the cabinet needs to know, or that they feel that they need to advocate for on behalf of their fellow students. So, we're really excited to bring this group of students into the program this year. We wish them a really good year. They're going to go through some training just before school starts, and then we're going to hit the ground running. So, without further ado, let's start our program. So, I will be calling you up one by one. Dr. Rodriguez, if you would come to the center, please. She will be swearing you in, and then we will take a photo opportunity for each one. Love you. Okay? Thank you. All right. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties. Give us one quick second. Okay, here we go. Our first student tonight is Patient Abaniz. Just step to the microphone there in front of you. There you go. Perfect. All right, so repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Patient Abaniz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next student is Wilberth Avila. Wilberth, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Wilberth Avila.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Anna Victoria Chavez. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Anna Victoria Chavez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Or that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Camelia Elzatma. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Camelia Elzatma.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And next, we have Tatiana, oh, I'm sorry, Fernanda Gallardo. Sorry, Fernanda. Fernanda Gallardo. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Fernanda Gallardo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Fernanda.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tatiana Eden Ochoa. There you go. I didn't have to tell you. I state your name.
I, Tatiana Eden Ochoa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear. Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Tatiana.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jimena Preciado. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jimena Preciado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the United States of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much.
Our next student is Anjanet Rosenbloom. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Anjanet Rosenbloom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And number nine, last but not least, Sasha Villa Albazo Garcia. I've only been saying that for years. I still mess it up. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Let's lower your mic a little bit. I want to make sure everybody can hear you. Ready? Raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Sasha Villa Albazo Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again, parents and students. I really look forward to working with you this year, as do all of my colleagues on the board. Those of you that are staying tonight for the board meeting, please join us on the dais. Oh, wait, picture first. Sorry.
Thank you Board President Tillman. To all of tonight's honorees, congratulations and thank you. This now concludes our special presentations for this evening. Student Board members, those of you who are on the dais tonight, please join us. You're welcome to stay to see what's going on, but we look forward to seeing you at future board meetings. And we've given you certificates, so I don't think they need to pick anything up. President Tillman, the floor is yours. Oh, you do have things to pick up. So see Mr. Martinez, please, in the lobby. Student Board members, see Mr. Martinez in the lobby. Tatiana, Anjanet, go see Mr. Martinez before you come up to the dais. Oh, okay, so you're good then.
2.3. Approval of agenda. Approve, move the second. Any changes? Hearing none, vote please. Ms. Ochoa.
I.
Ms. Rosenbloom.
I.
Section four, 4.1. Public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, and fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will provide no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first person to come for a public... Damian Delgado. Want it to be green.
Right there?
There you go.
Okay. It's my first time coming up here. Very excited. This is good? Hello everyone, my name is Damian Delgado. I am here to make a public comment for the reason that I am appreciative of the bill named AB 2724 being passed. I thank the board for passing this bill as it will help in my community for people to learn how to be prepared to vote when the time comes. Voting is one of the most important rights we are given, and I'm glad the more and more people are being prepared to contribute towards it. Once more again, I am thankful that the board is passing the bill.
Thank you.
How do I end this? Crystal Baden.
Ms. Medina.
I wasn't sure if other students were going to speak, but I just want to say that this was a great idea that came from students in our school district that had been fighting for this and brought this to the Assembly member Eloise Reyes, and then of course brought it to us board. And this is our ICUCU, and I wanted to say thank you for your advocacy work and for your commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Ben Pratt.
How you guys doing tonight? My name is Ben Pratt, and I'm the Vice President of the IBW Local 477, which is the Electrical Workers Union here in San Bernardino in Yonkers County. And I'd like to start off just by thanking the board. We had our very first pre-apprenticeship graduation at San Bernardino High School a few weeks back, and I came here on very short notice and asked for you guys to come and participate, and it was an outstanding showing. And some of the stories that you guys shared with the kids, I mean, they were poignant and great and beautiful, and it really means a lot to these kids to see that that their school district stands behind them. And it means a lot to me too, as a community member. I'm from San Bernardino, born and raised, you know. Both of my kids are growing up here and my grandkids now. So I love this place, I love this school district. And so thank you guys from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of the entire IBW, thank you guys for your support. And we're hoping that in the coming months, you know, we can take whatever steps necessary to expand this program, this pre-apprenticeship program, and make it available to more students. Because we think that what we have to offer, which is a debt-free five-year education, you know, that leads to a good living, is something that we want to share with our non-college-bound students. And for some students that are college-bound but would like to try something else along the way, I mean, it's open to everybody. And we'd like to expand it. And we think that the next step for us would be focusing on local hire. You know, we got a lot of talented kids here. You know, I've coached football in this district for nine seasons. And I see what we've got here, and our kids are talented and they're bright. And they shouldn't have to work, you know, 100 miles away from home. So we're hoping that, you know, in the coming months, you know, after more discussions, you know, I've had discussions with some of you and intend to have discussions with all of you. I'm hoping that we can come to some sort of a local hire community, student-involved workforce agreement, you know, that kind of mandates local hire, you know, when it comes to bond measures and things like that, so that our students have a chance to work in their own community. Obviously, five minutes is not enough time to get into all of that. So I guess I'd like to close by asking the board for an opportunity, you know, at a coming meeting to actually present what this community workforce agreement would look like. And, you know, hopefully we can come to some kind of consensus and, you know, keep doing what's right for these kids in this community. And again, thank you guys for your time, I really appreciate it. And thanks for everything that y'all do. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Husky, and then Ms. Medina.
I would like to see if we could agendize. I like the idea of us going from this pre-apprentice program into, you know, completing that loop to local hire either through some kind of student CWA. So I would like to have this agendized. I know there probably should be some kind of conversations, you know, with Mr. Komenic and folks before that, and also probably with Ms. Applegate and Dr. Rodriguez. But I think we have an opportunity, a unique opportunity, to pilot something that would be beneficial for our community and our students. And I would really like to see this. So I'm asking if we could agendize this at a future appropriate board meeting, given the time to...
There's not a agenda, but I think what we should do is probably put together a small committee, have you guys do the meeting, and then present our next steps after you've met. I think it'd be more productive than just having a agendized item for discussion with our board members.
However, this has to happen. I know ultimately we're going to have to vote on a community...
I said we should do a committee.
However you want to have that happen, I'm okay with that, as long as... And I would love to be on that committee if we need a board member on that committee, because I'd like to see this happen for our kids.
We'll do it, thank you. Ms. Medina.
I just want to say thank you for coming to our school district and also bringing the programs to our students here. And I know that it was, I think it was a few months ago, or was it last month, that I sent information, Santana Unified School District, there's Riverside Unified School District, that have some type of program similar to what you're talking about. And so I know that some of the school board members have been asking, how can we bring in local hire within these contracts? And so I think a committee would be a great start, because I know Mr. Komenic has some of this information already from when I emailed you with regards to the other school districts that have language pertaining to this. So if I can also participate in that, I would love to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Grande.
I also want to say thank you for all your work and what you do. I was one of those there, and I was truly very, very happy and impressed, and it was great. It was thinking things I've always thought and thought that we could do that. And I like, especially like that you had females there. I would like to see more females in your program. And I remember one of the vendors at one of the conferences we went to, they even have their own union. Women have their own union that are in the trades, and I was very impressed by that. I want to make sure we have equity. And maybe, you know, we don't always think of that right off, but we need to make sure that we include that. And I am also excited about a lot of things the ICEC already does and has in place. And I think that's something that they would already be familiar with, and they're always working towards new pathways and to improvements and to get students hired in our area. So I too would like to be on that committee and make sure that that is a reason.
Thank you for saying that, Mary Ellen, I appreciate that. And the IBW, we have a very robust women's caucus, and it's very important. Diversity is everything to us. It doesn't matter to us what anybody's background is, gender, race. Anybody that's willing to go to school twice a week for five years and learn this job, the door is wide open. But it does matter to us that we aren't diverse enough yet gender-wise, but we're working in that direction, I promise.
Ms. Alexander.
I also am very impressed with your program at San Bernardino High School. I just have a question. Do you feel as if your program, is it something that would be of interest to maybe even middle school in preparation for just moving into high school, but maybe just a different curriculum for the middle school students?
You know, I... Until I had a couple of conversations today, I hadn't really thought of it on that level. But I believe that a more broad-stroke approach at that grade level may be a viable thing. And something that can spark interest at a younger age and also, you know, get some of the preparation out of the way at a younger age. For instance, I know that kids are way more advanced at math these days than when I was a kid. So I mean, my understanding is that we might even be able to knock some of the algebra requirements out, you know, at the middle school or earlier high school years. So absolutely, we're open to all suggestions. And I want this to be a partnership, you know. So we will take... You guys are the educators in the room. So any advice that you have for us, I mean, we've got open ears. And so my answer is yes, absolutely. If you feel like that is a helpful addition to this, we're wide open.
Dr. Wyatt.
Mr. President, and Ben, great to see you again.
You too.
You know, you're right, it was a short notice, but you see the call to action that our board's all about, and the support that you're going to be getting for the program, as well as the support you give to our students. So I just want to say thank you. You know, one of the conversations we had from one of the young men that was there is he's a second-generation electrician in the making. So we often talk about generational change here, and so we see that happening and super excited about it. You know, just to tell you how much Ben will go out of the way, I met a young man at Sam's not too long ago, and he's been working with me a few times. He said, you know, I'd really like to be an electrician. I said, I reached out to Ben, said, hey Ben, you know, what do you think? He said, come to give me a call. So hopefully that young man, Nicole Paris, if he hasn't reached out to you yet, I'm going to bug him, but that's the kind of access we have to IBW, and it's just amazing to have that partnership. So I just want to say thank you.
It was in my office this morning, Scott.
Oh wow, wow, look at that.
And thank you, appreciate that.
That's like less than 48-hour action right there. So wow, Ben, outstanding, man, outstanding. Thank you again, thank you.
Two-way street, appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys, have a good night.
Antonio Hernandez.
Good evening, Superintendent Ariano, Board President Tillman, and the rest of the board. My name is Antonio Hernandez, and I and some of my peers are here on behalf of our ICUC Youth Program to express our gratitude for the unanimous vote. Yes, vote of the resolution supporting AB 2724 that was brought forward at the last board meeting by Board Member Medina. For folks that might not know, AB 2724 aims to ensure that all eligible students across the state of California get the opportunity to preregister, to vote before the end of their 11th grade. The reason why I think it is important for you all to support this bill is because before I got involved with ICUC, voting wasn't much of an importance to me. But through ICUC, I got to learn how I can express my morals and values by voting for propositions and elected officials whose values and morals align with my own. Not only that, but it's also important for young people to have a say, and I believe it is important in order for our country to progress. Not every youth across the state has the opportunity to participate in a program such as the ICUC Youth Leadership Program. Therefore, a bill such as AB 2724 can help students have the opportunity to learn about the importance of being engaged participants in our democracy. It's also really important because not many of those young folks know what it means to vote or why it is important. And that's why I think this initiative would help us achieve a bigger turnout amongst young people like myself. Back in March of this year, I had the opportunity to go to Sacramento to show my support for this bill and also learn more about how it will positively impact my generation. I, alongside 40 students from across high schools from our district, got the chance to share with the Assembly Committee on Education that we were in strong support of the bill during the committee hearing. Once again, I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for the support and for the work you all do to our, for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Former student board member Hernandez, thank you very much. John Harrow.
Hello, good afternoon, Board President Tillman, Superintendent... Yeah, and esteemed members of the board. My name is John Harrow, and I'm here with the ICUC Youth Program to thank you for supporting the bill, AB 2724, and the resolution brought forth by Board Member Medina. Our bill is continuing to move forward in the legislative process. The next step after the Appropriations Committee will be the Senate floor. And fingers crossed, it will pass. And it'll move to the final stop of the Governor's Desk. Please continue to send us good thoughts as we continue to push forward with the bill. Once it gets signed into law, we really look forward to collaborating with you to ensure the implementation of the bill. Once again, I just want to reiterate that we thank you all for your commitment to the students across San Bernardino, right? And we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Achilles War Cry Zavala. Achilles War Cry Zavala.
Good evening, San Bernardino City Unified School District Board Members. Hope to find you all doing well. To start off, my name is Achilles War Cry Zavala. I come from Mexican-American and Native American descent and I am now an incoming senior at Sangre Gonal high school. I am here today on behalf of the Inland Congregation United for Change Youth Team with some of my fellow youth to express our deepest gratitude for passing the resolution in support of our bill, AB 2724 Reyes. I thank you for not letting our effort striving for a better future go to waste. Our team has been working closely with Assembly Member Eloyes, Eloyes Gomez Reyes, author of the bill, to continue to push it, to continue to push it forward. Just today, some of our leaders had the opportunity to once again travel up to Sacramento to give witness testimony in support of the bill at the Elections and Constitutional Amendments Committee Hearing. We are excited to say that today it made it out of the committee with a six to one vote and is on its way to the Senate Appropriations Committee. These opportunities that students like myself have been able to have through our campaign and advocate for this bill have been extremely invaluable and developmental for our leadership skills. To know that, to know that our district and you, our board, support us in this work, it's, it's priceless, I'd like to say. So again, I thank you for seeing your, seeing the light in our bill and I hope this leads to a brighter path in our futures, all of our futures. I'm grateful for, you know, taking the time, or I'm grateful to you all for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. And I hope you all have a blessed day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to ICUC for your continued great work. We really do appreciate the work that you all do. That brings us to Section Five, closed session, closed session, public comments. Are there any public comments in closed session?
There are none.
We will adjourn into closed session. Like to call the meeting to order. Section Six, actually reported from closed session, 6.1 expulsion of students. A move. Oh.
Second.
Yeah, been moved in second. Discussion?
We have to. I'm not, I'm not sure of the process.
We'd like to make a, we're gonna, we're gonna, no, we're gonna make some changes to number 505959. Would you read in what the changes are, please?
Set a suspended expulsion, it will change from 632024 to 12202024.
We're going to vote with the, on the amendment, as amended, vote please.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Yes, my move to move it from the, change the term from 63 2024 to 12202024.
I'll second the motion.
All other terms and conditions remain the same as before.
Motion carried, 6.2, petition to expel, rescind, sealing of record or modify youth court or expulsion. A move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote please. Oh, sorry about that. It was seconded by Ms. Medina. Motion carried, Section Seven, Board Discussion, 7.1, welcoming Resource Center. Board members, you, you, you probably realize you, we didn't do a whole lot with the prioritizing names. I, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community, so I'm going to ask the board that we, initially when I did this, it was going to suspend the policy. It was thinking that there might be a consensus on a name, would it be named fast? That's obvious and that's not going to happen. So what I'm going to ask the board is that we allow this to go through the regular process. That way we'll ensure that we get input from the community and everybody will make sure they have the opportunity to weigh in on what the name should be. I don't want to slight anybody at this time. So if I see consensus, we'll do that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You can turn my mic off because that's what I wanted to ask was if we could go back.
Mr. President, I just had a question in regards to that. When we get feedback from the community, I believe the BP, the board policy, it was a committee, right? Are we doing something different than that?
Exactly. We're gonna, we're gonna follow the, the policy to the T.
And is there a committee already that exists or do we have to select members of the community?
Ms. Cunningham, do we have a naming committee?
Uh, no, we don't actually have a specific naming committee.
So then you will, we'll move forward or making sure we get the committee?
One of my concerns is that, you know, we always have a certain group of people that always participate. I just hope that it would be opened up to where maybe we get new folks to, to be able to be part of this committee.
That's in the policy too, in terms of what, what the makeup of the committee is. Yes, Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, there is a naming committee that is put forth together by the Facilities Department. I participated in one as I was a high school principal at the time when they opened up Indian Springs High School. And so there are different people that are involved in that committee, school officials, community members, teachers, classified folks. So there's a certain composition of the team and it, it does take its time as far as being able to vet people's names and the, and getting that background information. And really what they do is they will give, they will select some names, bring it as a recommendation to the board, then the board will then select from that recommendation.
What I would like to do is have Ms. Cunningham please forward the board policy, naming committee policy to all board members. And then we'll start the process.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Thank you, Mr.
Ms. Alexander?
For clarification, so the people that sit on the, the committee, are they already selected or is it something that's done every year? And we go through the same recommendation as a board and how does, I mean, I'm just curious.
That's why I think if, once you get a copy of the policy, it'll be clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've read it over the years, so I know it even entails how the committee members are appointed. It may be something where the board members recommend certain people for the committee, but it's real clear and it works. We've done it over and over again. Thank you. Mr. Choak?
All right, I was just curious as to like how they name the building. Like is it after a specific person or like what do they aim for when naming buildings?
We have policy in the district. I know the policy, for example, for high schools is that it cannot be named after a person. That's why all your high schools are named, not named after people.
So like, are we just trying to think of a cool name or something that's like representative of like?
It's usually someone who the committee feels is deserving. And then in the end, the board has the final decision on who is named after.
If it isn't a name, what type of name does, is it?
We're gonna name of a person, probably.
Okay.
Thank you. Section Eight, 8.1, personnel report.
As presented.
A move. Moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Mr. Husky. Vote please.
Ms. Grande?
Motion passed. Section Nine, nine, consent items, 9.1, approval of consent items.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Husky and seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please. Are there any to pull? Seeing that, vote please. And to my student board members, we're a little out of order tonight because of the new swearing in. So you guys aren't agenda to give reports tonight, okay? No? Section Ten, 10.1, reports, comments by union organizers, 10.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
10.2, California School Employees Association.
No report.
10.3, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
10.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
And no report.
Section 11, adoption of bylaws. 9130, board committees. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Husky. Vote please. Moved by Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Ochoa?
Aye.
Ms. Roswell?
Aye.
7.2, adoption of bylaw, board bylaw, 9320, meetings and notices.
A move.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Ms. Ochoa?
Aye.
Ms. Roswell?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Motion passed. And that brings us to Section 12.
No, 11.3.
11.3, adoption of board bylaw, 9323.2, actions by the board.
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina, seconded by Ms. Alexander. Vote please. Ms. Ochoa?
Aye.
Ms. Roswell?
Aye.
Motion passed. Section 12, reports and comments, 12.1, board members. Ms. Husky?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations again to our student board members. I'm really looking forward to working with you. This year, we're getting all of our planning done and I, I think we're going to have a great year. It looks like a great group of returning and, and new students. So welcome back and congratulations to you two and I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. I attended the Stater Brothers Meat Cutters graduation at, we have a program with ICEC, a partnership with Stater Brothers. And we graduated about eighty meat cutters. So the meat cutter that you see in your Stater Brothers near you could very well be one of the recent graduates from our, our program. So it was very, very exciting. And Dr. Rodriguez and I had some opportunity to have some conversation with the folks from Stater Brothers to see about other partnerships and expansions that we might be able to do that are similar to what they're doing with the meat cutters. I think there's a lot of opportunity there and I, I believe they've been very responsive to her in this. So I'm, I'm really excited to see what, what this can bring in terms of expanding our adult education programs. And again, bringing good, good jobs to our community, to the folks in our community. I also want to thank Mr. Platt for being here from IBW. What, what they're doing at San Bernardino High School and piloting there, I think is, is unique and I think there's a lot of opportunity for our kids. And again, you know, bringing good jobs and, and keeping, you know, a trained workforce in our community is really important to me and I, I, I think that's just another, these are just a couple of, you know, public, private partnerships that I think we could have that really are going to benefit our kids. I attended the Youth Court Summit this last week with, with some of our folks. The Youth Court Summit was held at UC Merced. It has youth courts from Humboldt and Shasta down to Temecula. We covered pretty mu, they covered pretty much the whole state. And we had a team here led by Stacy Leek and Dr. Henry Zagiri. Brenda Chow from one of our attendance specialists was there and we had, they had asked for a presentation on attendance alternatives. And so I had her come and present on some of the unique and different things that we're doing in San Bernardino and she was very well received. And, and some of the, the work that we're doing was very well received by, these are community-based organizations, police departments, you know, as well as educational entities from across the state. And then I also wanted to give a shout out to one of our kids, Dominic. You know, we, sometimes we think of leaders, you know, in, in one capacity. We think about them as, you know, sitting up here at the board or they're academics. Well, they have a dance and nobody was on the dance floor. And Dominic got, who's got everybody on, from our district, got everybody on the dance floor. He was on that dance floor the entire night. And he made the dance. He, all the people that were standing along the edge, you know, at first it was like, you know, the girls and the boys and he just got everybody going. He was dancing with everybody. So I just want to give him a shout out because, you know, that's kind of a leadership thing that's often overlooked, but it's a skill. Not being a wallflower and being the first one on the dance floor is a skill. And so I just want to give him some, a shout out as well. And the last thing I just want to say, happy Fourth of July. Stay cool, stay hydrated. I know it's about to be a really, really hot weekend. But I, I, you know, get some rest, some relaxation, enjoy family and barbecue, but I just hope everybody stays safe and sane. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to echo what my colleagues said, Mr. Husky, congratulations to our new student board members and our returning student board members. Just great having you up here. One of my items I'll be talking about and asking to maybe agendize soon will definitely require your input and that would be Senate Bill 1283, which is in regards to cell phone usage on our campuses. I know we have an existing board policy that's already there. But, you know, after talking with many of our staff and many of our administrators, cell phones on our campus continue to be a major issue in the instructional program as well as with bullying, with social and in person. So if, I'd like to get consensus from the board to agendize that and revisit that policy to ensure that we support our administrators and staff with that policy.
I'll look for consensus. I, I, I think a number of districts are moving forward with making changes for the start of the school year. I, I would just suggest that we wait and see how that hap, how it works out in the first semester. We could probably learn a whole lot from these districts. I really think that right now, no one's in school yet. So the concerns of parents and students are going to happen when they go back to school and find out this new law or these new changes have taken place. I really think, and we, we can agendize the consensus here, but I just am kind of leery about making a change.
It could be for down the road, Mr. President. I, it's not a rush, but I am in agreement with monitoring it because it's definitely.
I agree. I know it's an issue, but I think we can learn a lot by these other districts taking effect at the start of the school year.
I just wanted to clarify, what was that Senate Bill, what?
It's a Senate Bill 1283.
Can I finish what you're covering?
Yes, sir. And then we, we did have an invitation, I know invited Superintendent Ariano and President Tillman from the Southwestern's Carpenters Union, Union to visit their training center. You know, I'd open that up to my colleagues as well as maybe some of our administration specifically in CTE. I know Mr. Husky was talking about our partnerships and as we saw Mr. Pratt here today from IBW, Southwestern and Carpenters Union is another huge partner of ours. And if you've never been to their training facility, trust me when you go there. And if you've never been to their training facility, trust me, when you go there, you will be absolutely shocked about how amazing it is. It is literally a work site, construction site within a building where they drive huge tractors and everything else and I've seen nothing like it, but it is definitely one of those pathways that our students, uh, would have a wonderful opportunity to be able to pursue in regards to their pathway right out of high school for internships. Um, as we heard Mr. Pratt say, it's, uh, earn while you learn, no debt, they get paid for their internship. And it's not just carpentry, it is also masonry, welding, and many other trades within that field, um, ironworking, everything you, you can imagine under one roof. So it wouldn't just be one particular field that they could go into, but many different fields they could go into. So I know we have, uh, folks wanting to work with us, willing to work with us, and I think we should definitely invest into it and look into it at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mary Ellen Abilis Grande.
Well, I, what was the question?
Board report.
Board report. Oh, yes, thank you. I just, uh, want to mention that I did, um, let, leave all of you, uh, some paperwork on some of the research that I've been working on this past three, a year. And I can see clearly now what it is I'm trying to do. And so that's really good news for me because it's, the clearer I am, then the more I can tell you. So this paper is, I just am going to ask you if you read it. This is something I've really, uh, worked hard at understanding and looking and it's very multifaceted. And if you look at the issue of, don't look at the money, okay? Look at the vision on all what has to be done. And one of the things that we have to work on is to change the character of the problem, of the environment of, it's, it's so multi-pronged. It's, um, it's the writing of the language that is on all of these. And if you see, education is alluded to throughout, but it should be a partner. It should be a school district partner. And I do have a note of Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. So these are the visions and the biggest vision, but also, we start also with very small at the subacute to see what makes happen. We have a partnership with them. We have an ADA that we received from those students over there. They, um, they are considered a student and yet there's no equity in my eyes and I think probably in yours. Um, the teacher, Lori, that was here this last time, she was, uh, very passionate. Um, she has not received, uh, a laptop, uh, that was promised her a year ago. They asked her, uh, her, uh, her people above her, asked her, do you want a iMac or the other one? And she told them an iMac and it's been a year and she's never received it. Um, she, she says there, I, I said, what, did you take it into IT? She goes, no, I, it's pretty old. And all our other teachers have these things. So, so we want to make sure that they are not marginalized and if it's just one teacher or two or three, we want to make sure they have some semblance of that. So I'm really happy that, uh, Mr. Mar, uh, Ariano went with me and he saw the kitchen area that I see that would make a, a perfect, um, space for a teacher classroom, um, to have some kind of, um, supply cabinet that we could have for our teachers and work. So there's some things that we can do, very hopeful, uh, and that we can have, uh, you know, dignity, health and common spirit, see us more as a partner in this, not that they are, anyone's doing anyone a favor or a service, but that we actually look to help make it a school-like environment at least for an hour or two a day for these children. So I'm talking two different things nationally and locally, okay? So just letting you, keeping your breast in pura, Matt, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Medina.
Uh, I, I just wanted to say congratulations to all our new school board mem, uh, student school board members that are coming and joining our, our team. Um, they always provide great insight and at least a, a perspective that many of us, um, will definitely need in, in really understanding of what, uh, what's out there that we need to improve on. Um, with that, I, I know several months ago, I had requested the district to look into how our high schools could be a voting or a polling location. I wasn't sure if maybe we try to find out if it's even possible. I know our elementary schools, uh, several of our elementary schools are polling locations and so I wanted to kind of follow up and ask the district to, uh, really check in, how can our high schools, uh, be polling locations? This, many of our students, um, are eighteen years old and they can vote and, and this would be easy access for them to have that opportunity. Um, you know, maybe once they're home, it's, it's a little bit more difficult, so I just wanted to put it out there and, and hopefully we can get, I can get an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina and Mrs. Alexander.
Yeah. Um, I had an opportunity to attend even with Cal Works. Uh, they're putting together, they've put together a committee, um, focusing on safeness for students riding their bikes to school, walking, and I know we have the initiative as it relates to walking to school, but this, um, particular committee, they're focusing on a couple of things. The policymaking behind it because of just some, some of the schools that we're, that they're looking at, we might not own that property, but it's the county or it could be part of the city. So what has occurred, brought in both the city, the county, Omni Trans was in, in the meeting, the engineer, the city engineer, also council members, as well as just an opportunity just to discuss what are the current constraints. But they have actually identified certain areas that they're looking at in terms of schools. And one thing that I did recommend is that Eric the Tier be a part of the discussion point, just, um, to represent us from our vantage point related to safety. Uh, but one of the outcomes of the meeting is it would be continued discussion points about just, uh, riding your bike and the safeness behind it and what are the requirements that we need from a school district perspective? So more to follow, but I think that the other outcome was the fact that I think there was a lot of concentration on the city and the city engineer and Omni Trans, but not so much our school district. Um, but the one question that came up and it was related to just the medians around the schools. Um, how are, who's responsible? Because if the city engineer identifies that there is an opportunity to add more space and safeness, who, who's responsible for it? Is the school district or is it the city or is it a collaboration? Um, more to follow, but that's just something that will come up and, um, a discussion point that we probably will have to address. Um, their next meeting, it is on Sundays. Um, and it's from nine to noon. We weren't able to walk because it was too hot, but I, I felt like it was a, a good discussion that would, took place. We all received the invitation to attend, so when you receive the invitation, if you can, just attend and just represent. Um, but it was a, it was a working group, so more to follow from there. In addition to that, um, purposeful pathways. I, um, brought this up before when we received our presentation a couple of months ago. And I just want to go back to just seeing how we can address it considering we're in the middle of school year and between school starting, um, just figuring out how can we make sure that some of these pathway programs that we have are actually being offered in the middle schools? And they're allowing the students to matriculate. Maybe they can't get the same certifications because of age restrictions, but at least that opportunity, that exposure is there. So I'm just curious to see, is that part of our intention going into next school year? And that's pretty much it and congratulations to all the student board members. We're excited about just you coming in next year and I know some of you are returning. Uh, so you have a lot to, uh, teach the others and I know you'll do an amazing job.
Very much. And, uh, congratulations again to our returning board, student board members and to the new ones. And a big thank you to Superintendent, uh, Mary Roan and district staff for doing a great presentation for Alexander Madison's, uh, retirement of his jersey. It was a wonderful event, perfect weather and the, uh, the excitement, uh, in the, in the event was just amazing. It was just a great vibe and, uh, it turned out well. He was excited. It was great to see our local, sounds, we were saying about our local Heisman Trophy winner, Jayden Daniels there also. And when you think about how rare it is, even to make it to the NFL and be playing, but to have two players of that caliber at that close to age really is a testament to the support that we have as a community and a district for, um, all our lines of services to our students, but in particular because we're talking about those in terms of sports. And, uh, to me, the proof is in the pudding and it doesn't get any better than that, uh, showing that, uh, our district is able to help produce, uh, that caliber of athletes here locally. As the superintendent would say, right here. So it was a, a great, great program. Mr. Ariano.
President Tillman, you know, I want to start today by just thanking a few people that sometimes we overlook, uh, at our monthly meetings, you know? A big, a big thank you to our translators that are always in the back here at every board meeting. Thank you for your support. Want to thank our colleagues from M and O who are always here to make sure that we're in a comfortable environment. So thank you for being here and, and our colleagues that are in the audience today, thank you for your moral support here and, uh, Mr. Martinez, great to see you back. Thanks for being here today. So I also want to congratulate and, uh, welcome back our student board members that are coming back for a year or two. And of course, we're excited to get to know the new members, uh, that we met here today. But, uh, I want to thank the board in particular, Ms. Husky. Thank you for, uh, making this program come to fruition. Uh, it's, it's been a good experience, not only for us, uh, but for the kids. So, uh, appreciate it and we're looking forward to all their wisdom, uh, this year. So if I could please, uh, have the slides come up here for a second. I always like to brag a little bit about our wonderful school district and I know it's mentioned today, but I wanted to show some pictures of Mickey and Dr. Isagiri and a lot of our, uh, San Bernardino City Unified School District colleagues, uh, that attended the nineteenth youth court summit. And I know San Bernardino is well-known for our youth court and I know Mickey was a big part of that over the last decade, so, uh, good to see, uh, State Superintendent Thurman, uh, supporting not only, uh, the, the, the program as a whole in the state, but I know he sees Mickey as a leader in this, uh, in this program. So Mickey, thank you for your hard work and thank you for our team, uh, representing at the youth summit. Next slide. And I too want to echo what President Tillman shared. What a wonderful community event that was put together by Mayor Roan, her team, our M and O folks, uh, our school security, everyone in the district that poured in to this program as well as Nikki Detment at, uh, Making Hope, uh, Foundation. Uh, it was a beautiful afternoon, a little hot, a little hot. I don't know about perfect weather, sir, it was hot, uh, but at least it wasn't raining, right? Uh, but I want to echo what the President Tillman, to have, uh, Alexander there and Jaden on the same stage is a testament to the focus and support that this board has had going back a decade in terms of making sure that students are engaged, that we are providing them top-notch, uh, athletic, uh, fields and programs and uniforms. Uh, if you look good, feel good, you're going to do good, right? So I want to congratulate Alexander Madison on the retirement of number twenty-two that will forever hang on the rafters of, uh, San Bernardino High School. So thank you, everybody, for your support. I also want to thank Mayor Tran, Supervisor Baca, and Jeff Embriani, one of our teachers at San Bernardino High School, who was his high school coach at San Bernardino High School. They did an excellent job, made some excellent comments and we just appreciate, uh, their support. Next slide. I had the honor this morning to speak, uh, to Kiwanis, uh, to share our multi-year vision and our operating values. And, uh, Mary Ellen, thank you for the invitation and please extend my thanks to, uh, Dr. Nena Torres. Uh, it was a great group, a lot of great questions and they are very excited about the energy in the school district and everything that we are doing as a team, uh, to help improve, uh, student achievement, but also just student experience, right? Not just the achievement, but student experience. So thank you, Mary Ellen, for the opportunity and I, I look forward to going back, uh, multiple times, uh, moving forward. Next slide. And just wanted to share with the board our continued efforts in making sure that our schools are the jewels of the community as we promised. And, uh, people in the community are noticing, as a matter of fact, a couple of folks in the Kiwanis group today mentioned that they were seeing the difference in the landscaping and the painting our schools. So this is Ingram, which is right across the street from the Hospital Medical Center Drive. So our M and O team, they're doing, uh, outstanding work, making sure that our schools, uh, look as the jewel of the community. Next slide. And as part of that, uh, I wanted to share with you two additional new, uh, murals that we have, uh, across the school district. The one on the left with the tiger is at Richardson Prep High and the one on the right is at Caesar Chavez Middle School. So to kind of give you perspective, the mural at Caesar Chavez Middle School is the long rectangular wall that faces the outfield of the Western Regionals Little League, uh, championship field. And if you've ever watched those on TV, you will notice that you see the school in the background many times. So I shared with, um, Robert Morales how that would be free advertisement. So thanks to Terry Koenig, who supported the vision of getting, uh, a, a very nice mural up there so the perception of our schools could be seen not only just at West Regional, but on TV, people all over the, uh, the world. So, uh, Matt Kavanaugh is the one who did these two murals as well as the one of Dr. Henry at Henry Elementary School. So we really applaud, uh, Matt Kavanaugh for his artwork and really beautifying our schools. Next slide. And then that handsome devil right there, we know as Chief Paulino. So I want to give him a shout out for, uh, representing and being a keynote speaker at the Employment Law Conference. So thanks for representing Chief and I'm glad that people recognize the wisdom and value that you bring not only to your profession, but to the community. And in that little picture to the right, you'll see those handsome gentlemen, uh, around Chief. Uh, most of them are already our sworn police officers, but the two gentlemen flanking, uh, Chief on the left and right-hand side, Isaac Perez and Josiah Gasso are current campus security monitors who just finished the police academy, who, of course, we are now bringing into our police, uh, family. So Chief, thank you for encouraging them and motivating them and we send our congratulations to both Isaac and Josiah. Next slide. And I just want to invite the board and, uh, remind the board that we have our teacher welcome back coming in July thirty, thirty-first and then we also have our, um, summer management conference coming in July, but I want to share some of the folks that are going to be here today or at these, uh, conferences. Dr. Tyrone Howard, who is a professor of education at UCLA, who I've had the honor of working with, uh, the last several years in my previous district and now here, who's the author of, uh, a few books, uh, namely, No More Teaching Without Positive Relationships and the other book called All Students Must Thrive. And what I love about Tyrone Howard's message, he already spoke to our principals, uh, this past month, but one of the quotes that I love to repeat from Dr. Howard is, "Stop telling me what kids can't do, start telling me what they can do." And his big message is that as educators, we have to build these positive relationships with kids, right? Successful schools start with successful relationships. So, uh, hopefully the Board of Education, you'll have an opportunity to be here on one of these days. It's at Cassulis Arenas at Cal State. He's an amazing speaker and, uh, I think you'll enjoy, uh, Dr. Howard's, uh, message. Next slide. And for our management conference, I'm equally excited to report that we have Dr. Victor Rios and Dr. Bill Daggett, who will be, uh, presenting. Uh, Dr. Rios is a sociology professor at UC Santa Barbara and if you don't know the story, absolutely amazing. Dropped out in eighth grade, juvenile hall at fifteen, got his life together, back in school and now has a doctorate. He served on President Obama's, uh, Educational Committee back in the day. Uh, and he is the one that coined the term at promise as opposed to at risk. And so we've asked Victor, he said, well, what do you want me to talk about? I said, real simple, tell your story. And the story is wrapped around educators who saw him, heard him, valued him and helped him become who he is today. So, uh, we're looking forward to having our management team hear his life story and of course, uh, all of you are invited and hope you can be there to hear, uh, Dr. Rios's, uh, amazing story. And then the next day, we'll have Dr. Bill Daggett, who is the founder of the International Center for Leadership and Education. And he's basically known more as an educational futurist. And what we've asked him to, uh, come speak about is the future of AI and its implications on education. Uh, he is an, he has an amazing keynote presentation on how artificial intelligence is going to help education move forward. So we're excited to have, uh, three well-known, nationally well-known, probably worldwide-known folks right here in San Bernardino, working with our staff. So we're looking forward, uh, to those presentations and hope you can make it. And that's all I have today, President Tillman.
Thank you very much and I want to thank Superintendent for thanking the folks who helped make these meetings happen. As an IT person though, I want to give our IT folks and multimedia people some love too and thank you all for, um, being behind the scenes, making sure that folks get to view and hear these meetings. Thank you very much. That brings us to section thirteen, summary of board members' requests, thirteen point one, review of requests.
Good evening. President Tillman.
Good evening. President Tillman requested we create a committee to look into developing a community workforce. Ms. Rosales Medina and Ms. Chaski, as well as Mrs. Grande, um, expressed interest into joining the committee. President Tillman asked that naming of the Welcoming Resource Center be done in accordance with the district policy, and a naming committee be established. Karen, um, will be sending the board policy to all board members. Dr. Wyatt requested consensus to agendize Senate Bill twelve eighty-three regarding the usage of cell phones on campuses. President Tillman suggested that we wait and see what other districts are doing. Mrs. Rosales Medina requesting once again and following up on how our high schools can be polling places to vote. And lastly, Mrs. Alexander, um, is bringing back course, purposeful pathways and how we can address it, and how we can make sure that the pathways are actually being offered in middle schools, and allowing kids to matriculate and have exposure to them. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt.
President, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, Ms. Ballantag, just correction, I did wanna be a part of that subcommittee as well. Thank you.
And a chain of motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.